Introduce ourselves, that would be great.
I'm Gabrielle Wheeler, communications intern.
Leslie Herfey, clerk.
Good afternoon, I'm county commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Alito, county administrator.
Michael Freeman, legal cap.
Good afternoon, I am Stephanie Sumerodumas, president of the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners. We have a long agenda, so we will get to work, but before we do that, I would like to say today is National Fentanyl Awareness Day. And the reason for the Awareness Day is to raise awareness, of course, about this growing fentanyl problem in the public health sector. It's just all over, and so we need to figure out how to combat it, and we're using, not just us, but everyone, using all types of strategies to try to circumvent this evilness that's in the land. People are dying right now at an alarming rate due to the legally made fentanyl. And so this synthetic opioid that's being used, and also there were, many people are dying, but just recently, two young ladies died from this laced fentanyl. I would just ask if we just could have a moment of prayer for those two young ladies that had so much potential. Amen, thank you so much. So we'll get to work, our first item on the agenda is COVID-19 comprehensive update. Commissioner Casterman.
Good afternoon, thank you so much for having me today. So let's get started here with how we look. So two weeks ago, when I had the opportunity to present to the commissioners, we had about 80 cases per day. Today, we have inched up a little bit, we are at 111 cases per day. So we are seeing a little bit more COVID activity in the community, which is clearly observed in this map that I shared last week. Orange represents 50 to 100 cases per 100,000, red represents 100 to 200 cases per 100,000. So you can see that pretty much of our county is starting to see some increases in COVID-19. Positivity rates as well have inched up, we are at 4.5% positivity for COVID tests. But the good news is, when you look at hospitalizations, intensive care unit admissions, and ventilator usage, we are not seeing anything too drastic. And let me zoom in a little bit more. On the left is the hospital utilization, you can see a slight uptick, but it's very slow and gradual. So I'm very hopeful that we're not going to see any drastic increases. ICU admissions continue to be low. And as I have said many times here at the commission meetings, because we are seeing such low usage of our intensive care units, we're continuing to see low death rates. So only one to zero individuals are passing away at this time due to COVID-19. So those are all continuing to be positive with regards to more serious illness. So if you're vaccinated, we know that illness tends to be less serious. If you've had it before, sometimes that can also result in less serious illness. So that's looking how it's translating in Hamilton County. As far as vaccinations, we are proud to be back at the Board of Elections. Primary season has wrapped up, and so our team has a location at the Board of Elections. We are also out in our community using our mobile units and getting vaccine to those that need it the most. We're seeing anywhere from 250 to 350 people per week right now, which is excellent. A lot of people are going for boosters, a lot of people still are coming and getting first doses, which is wonderful news from my perspective. For those over the age of 30, we have now continued to stay at 70%. So we are very pleased with that and continue to welcome anyone who wants to come and get their first dose of vaccine. How do we look as a county? So you can imagine cases, as mentioned, we are up, we are officially on the CDC map at 71 cases per 100,000. That is no surprise, we were anticipating that based on our seven-day average. But the good news is, when you look at the other metrics that now inform whether we recommend masks in indoor public locations, we are still green or low for community levels. So that's very positive from my perspective. We continue to watch these very closely. As far as what is circulating here in the United States, Region 5 in Ohio, we're still seeing a lot of the BA2 variant, which is a variant of the Omicron version of COVID-19. In fact, in the U.S., about 62% of all cases are the BA2 variant, and about 37% of all cases are the newer, the BA2.121 variant. So let's look at our region, you can clearly see the BA2 is starting to decrease in our region, and we are starting to see an increase of this newer version of an Omicron variant, the BA2, the BA2.121. So we'll continue to watch that, although there is no indication that either of these variants causes more severe disease. They do spread easily, but you know, the key is that we're not seeing increases in severe illness. The very last slide actually touches on the comments that you had at the beginning of the commission meeting, Commissioner Sumerodumas, and it deals with fentanyl. As you mentioned today, May 10th is Fentanyl Awareness Day, and it's the first ever Fentanyl Awareness Day, and it's a national day of awareness. And the importance in knowing about fentanyl, as we know, it is extremely deadly. Many years ago, the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition actually held a press briefing to talk about fentanyl showing up in opiates and heroin in our community, and we saw a significant increase in deaths. Unfortunately today, fentanyl is now starting to be found in many other illegal drugs and substances that people are purchasing, including with the young individuals that just passed away at Ohio State University. They believe that they were purchasing Adderall, and it turns out they were purchasing Adderall that had fentanyl in it, and it resulted in death. And that is something we are trying to bring awareness to. Our organization in partnership with many in our community has been providing fentanyl for a long time. We've mostly been providing it through our syringe service program, now called Safe Services. People could hop on and pick up fentanyl test strips. I am proud to announce today, I have left a flyer in front of each of you, we are now doing mail order fentanyl test strips, starting just today. So if somebody wants fentanyl test strips, they can text 22999 and text the word FTS, and we will mail them test strips. That is reserved for only Hamilton County residents, but the good news is, the state, or there's another program that provides them statewide. And so if somebody needs fentanyl test strips, they are able to get them sent to them directly. The key is that folks use these test strips before using any kind of illegal substance. Obviously, it's best that somebody doesn't use the illegal substance, but if somebody has made the purchase, they are definitely planning on using it, and by testing, they are able to alter their behavior. Through my team's work over the last several years, we have actually know that 75% of people that use a test strip alter behavior. They may choose to use with someone else that can help save them, should they have a bad reaction to the fentanyl. They might choose not to use it at all, or they might make sure that they have Narcan before using that substance. So we are pleased to be able to provide this to our community. Obviously, our number one goal, 100% of the time, is getting people into treatment. But we know that sometimes folks are using it recreational and are not going to get access to treatment or not choose to get treatment because they don't feel that they are addicted. And so this is another tool to help keep people alive. I will stop there and turn it back to you for any questions.
Thank you so much for all your good information and also being the pilot for the test strips. So I thank you so much, you and your staff, for all that you do. Testing was really something, I went Friday to meet with President Biden, and they had indicated that the testing would happen that day when we came to see him. And I don't know if they didn't have time to set up anything, but nobody was tested going through, and I thought that was really unusual. I mean, you wore a mask if you wanted to. But I would think that they would provide testing or have you show proof of testing, so I was really surprised about that. I don't have any questions, though. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, just wanted to highlight the part that you said. Our board put money in to keep testing going, and you talked about another variant. We don't know how many others may be popping up, so it's good that we have those test sites and they can get them on your site or Test and Protect or 513 Relief. And it's provided at no charge, because now, you know, everything is, there's a charge, there's copays, there's, all the bills have started again. So we don't want someone not to get tested because of finances. So just want to thank you for that, and also your technology. I like the fact that you have texting, that's something that I know I've been pushing a lot on all of our programs to begin to get into text, because that's the most efficient way people are communicating now. They're not checking their emails all the time, or some of them don't have emails. So I'm glad that you have a texting piece and that you have this. Do you also have any tutorial on how to use them if someone has not done a test before on your site or something?
Yes, so when you actually text this number, you get three links. One is to sign up for the actual kits to be mailed to you. We don't ask your name, we just ask your address so that we can get them to you. The other link is, so it provides directions, so you can use and know how to use it safely. And the third link is, as mentioned, if you're not a Hamilton County resident, it's a tool for you to get them in other locations in Ohio.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your update. I wanted to jump just a little bit further, because as has been said by both commissioners, we have put money behind testing, COVID testing in the community. So I'm going to read off very quickly where that testing is happening. It's at Quinn Chapel in Forest Park, Monday through Friday from 9 to 5. The Price Hold Library on Purcell, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays from 10 to 6. And the Quarryville Library, Thursdays and Fridays from 10 to 6. So that's in addition to the Board of Elections site that you have, which is very efficiently run, and your nurses are delightful, as I said before, they're very, very nice and very good at what they do. So thanks for the information related to COVID. I too want to talk about the test strips. So thank you for providing these. You know, we know that people are using recreationally and don't know what they're using, because they're buying them off the streets. And these test strips then can become lifesavers. And so, thank you, I've never, I have Narcan in my purse, but I don't have any test strips. So it's interesting to look at these and see how easy they are to use for someone who, you know, maybe got a pill from a friend or something, and they need to know what's in that pill. So not that we're encouraging people to do that, but some people are, and they need the test strips to make sure they know what they're taking. So thank you for providing that, and I do want to say that Care Coal, I know, is a partner in all of this to try to make sure that people have Narcan, people have test strips, so that if they are using, they at least don't have a fatal situation for themselves or for a friend. So thank you for doing that and being the forerunner on some of this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming and your update.
Yep, thank you.
So next item on our agenda is information regarding COVID-19 long hauler diagnoses. We have Dr. Rachel Foot is here, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today. And so I'm one of the co-directors of the Long COVID Clinic at UC Health, and along with Richard Becker. I'm going to talk about what goes by many names, but long COVID, post-COVID syndrome, post-COVID conditions, or PASC is how I've chosen to talk about it today, which is post-acute sequelae of COVID-19. And so we just talked about a lot of the information on COVID as far as data, current data, but to review some of the statistics, we've had 2.68 million cases, this is a couple of weeks old, but of COVID-19 in Ohio, with 38,000 deaths and 188,000 cases of COVID-19 and 2,056 deaths in Hamilton County alone. But the majority of people will survive their COVID infection. And post-COVID conditions can affect up to one in five of these patients who recover, even patients who have mild initial symptoms. So what is PASC? It's a very broad definition that includes anyone who's had persistent symptoms up to four weeks after their initial COVID infection. So that encompasses a lot of people. But most common symptoms are fatigue, shortness of breath, headache, cough, chest, brain fog, changed sense of taste or smell, and then muscle and body aches. And so because it's a very broad definition, it encompasses a few different groups of people. So some people with distinct diagnoses that we see abnormal testing on our usual diagnostic workup, and then people who have a syndrome that don't necessarily have abnormal tests, that we don't have as yet etiology for their syndrome and their persistent symptoms. Some common conditions associated with PASC that we want to make sure we are getting a diagnosis for these patients are pulmonary fibrosis or persistent scarring of the lungs, or other abnormal pulmonary findings. Thrombosis or clots, so clots in the lungs, clots in the brain, or strokes, or deep vein thromboses. Myocarditis or pericarditis, or scarring of the heart or the sac surrounding the heart, and then depression. And so we have the COVID-19 Recovery Clinic at UC Health. It's the only COVID-19 Recovery Clinic in the region. It's a multidisciplinary clinic with multiple different specialties involved. And then we see about 15 to 20 new cases per week in that clinic, but it is unfortunately booked until the fall of 2023 because of the volume of patients and the lack of, we just don't have enough staff to support that volume. It's primarily referral-based as well, so we just essentially see people who are referred from their primary care doctor. So it's probably really just the tip of the iceberg of these patients who are still experiencing persistent symptoms. And so we really need some better screening tools to help identify those who are really suffering with this condition, because it affects a lot of their home life, their job, their education, and their overall quality of life. And so I do think that public health really depends on making sure that this message is out there and that people are seeking healthcare where they can for their persistent symptoms. That's all I had, if anyone has questions for me.
Thank you so much, so informative and simplistic. I was looking at the screening tools that are needed to identify those suffering. Is that being done on a national level to try to come up with more screening tools, or are you see doing that?
I think, yeah, on a more national level, it's even with the psychiatric part of it, they're developing screening tools for that, because we have a lot of patients with persistent brain fog. And so even at UC, we're working to develop screening tools for who needs to see different, you know, subspecialties, neurology versus psych, and that sort of thing. But I think, yeah, on a more national level, it is being worked on, but.
All right, thank you. Vice President Reese.
Yes, I want to thank you for coming, and I'm glad we are having this topic. I had asked about this topic, because I had heard from people who said, you know, they still have symptoms. In fact, just today, someone that a lot of people in the certain age group, this young man, he had, I guess he might be about in his 40s, late 40s, maybe, very popular DJ, his name is Chris Paul. And he had, you know, worked out, and, you know, was all on the fit kick, and got COVID. And he said in his post yesterday that he had went because he was having trouble breathing, and he's always in the gym, working out and getting fit. He went for a screening, they found it was not the heart from a CAT scan, but found he had an aneurysm, and he's probably in surgery right now. And so a lot of people were, you know, coming in, commenting about they had, you know, COVID and the symptoms. They're still coughing and a lot of the things that you put in here. And so I did ask the question, where do people go after they survived COVID, but are now living with a lot of ailments that could be, you know, deadly and both costly financially? And I just think it's a good point, because as we're looking at ARPA money, and we're going to talk about that later today, and we only can use it, I guess, as four years or five years, and we're looking at what is the long-term investment? So the shorter-term investment is we keeping testing going. But then on this longer-term side, this can affect, you know, our levy and people who might end up going to the hospital who don't have the finances, and I know Commissioner Casterman. But I just think we need to get something with the great minds in the medical field to come back to us and look at. Is this something that needs to be in the clinics? Is this something we should be advocating? Is this something we should be putting some dollars to the side? Because we're going to have a whole generation of folks who are still living, they beat COVID, but their body got beat down, and there are other ailments. So you're saying currently you're already booked for this year?
Yeah, we have, it's, you know, myself and Dr. Becker are the two primary physicians that see patients. Myself on the pulmonary side and Dr. Becker on the cardiology side. And so everyone kind of gets filtered through us, and we only, there's only so much of us. And like I said, one in five patients are still having persistent symptoms after having COVID, so it's a large number of patients.
And you're the only so far in this whole county?
Multidisciplinary clinic, yep.
And how many people do you already have booked that you've seen?
Oh, that we've, I think we have, we're in the realm of 600 patients that we've seen so far.
Wow, and we have about how many, you say, that probably survived COVID, you think?
I'd have to do the math.
I was just thinking ballpark, because we had 38,000 deaths, 2.6 million cases, that was in Ohio. Hamilton County cases, 188,000.
Yeah, so, and then one in five of those have persistent symptoms.
Wow, and you're maxed out at 600. I do think that we need to at least have someone come to us, the medical community, and where do we go from here? You're right, if you have a primary doctor and you go to doctor, they can refer you. But one of the things that made what we did so great in Hamilton County is that we captured at least, you know, those who had good insurance and those who didn't. And we made it, you know, affordable. So, yeah, I'd like to follow up on what you guys are doing, what you might recommend, something that if we need to take a look at something in conjunction with our health commissioner and our other commissioners in other areas too, I think coming back to us with something kind of like, here's where we are. The last thing is, in your screening, are you looking at, I'm getting a lot of people asking about data on the vaccine. And we didn't have any data, we kind of just prayed and hoped we're going in the right direction. But if there were any data on any type of things that we might see, side effects, or I'd like to keep up on that.
Are you talking about side effects of the vaccine, or as far as preventing post-COVID symptoms, or?
Yeah, the vaccine, or are there any? So if they're not, I want to be able to tell people, you know, it's not. But if it's something, we all said we were going to be a bit transparent about it. So CDC, I thought, was going to follow it after so much time and, you know, post-stuff. I don't know if we're at that point yet or not.
I mean, I'm probably not the most expert person to talk about this, but we, there are some very rare, you know, like any vaccine, there's some very rare side effects and more serious problems with the vaccine, but they've been, for the most part, quite few and far between what's been written up in the literature, and much less severe than getting COVID itself.
And the COVID survivors, you talk about here, the muscle and body aches and blood clots. We're hearing a lot of people, blood clots, which could kill you. So any type of data that you have, I'd love for us to keep a press, a prize to it. And if there's any dealing with broken down by race as well, as we are working with other groups to help gab, any type of education we can do or help to get the word out. We can't get your word out, because you're booked, but maybe we need to get some more, basically you're showing that there's a need for this. And this is the future of medicine in the world. We're going to have to have some places where people go who, they beat COVID, but COVID left some scars. So thank you for at least acknowledging that, because I know people who have beat COVID and they are struggling, especially with their lungs, with their memory loss and those kind of things. And they're just looking for someone to tell them what this is and what can they do, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, thank you for being here today, really appreciate the information. I just have one question, so I know it's early, because we've just gone through this and you're dealing with these individuals now, but is there anything from past diseases that inform how you think these folks that have long-haul symptoms will do either in the near future or in the longer term related to things like brain fog, and some of the things that are not life-threatening but debilitating? And is there any way to kind of predict what we might see here?
And I'm, it is on the early side, but we have seen people improve over time. Sometimes a long time, like a year to a year and a half. And some of the people who really got COVID in the very beginning of the pandemic, we've seen have improved. But yeah, if we look at other coronaviruses, we do see that they get better. And people who have somewhat similar syndromes as this seems to be, they do get better with time, but it does sometimes take quite a bit of time to, a year to a year and a half. And we have seen some accelerated improvements with some treatments that we've been able to offer too. And it's part of the problem of this syndrome is that not everybody fits in one box. It's very, especially just even with what symptoms are predominant in them, but also what sequelae of COVID they have really determines the treatment of what direction to go. And so it's hard for us to just say, tell primary care doctors, just do this in post-COVID syndrome or PASC. And so, where was I getting with that? So anyways, yeah, these patients are certainly suffering, and they, but we have seen some improvement with time, but sometimes can be a long time, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just very briefly, just want to thank the doctor and UC Health broadly for being such a great partner during all of COVID. And as the board is aware, in our ARPA recommendations, we do have a grant program for health infrastructure, and it's modeled somewhat after what we had done with our CARES Act funding as well, where we had a grant for public health infrastructure. And I believe out of that grant, we awarded 740,000 to UC Health for the established, for equipment that went into this long-haul institution, so happy to see the partnership. It sounds like there's still more work to do for maxed out at 600 folks, but just happy to see the partnership continuing, and want to thank the doctor for being here to talk to us today.
Thank you so much, and I also wanted to thank you, as the president of this board, we thank you so much for taking time out for all that you've done already and taking time out to come and see us. This is an issue, the long hauler issue that our entire board was concerned about, wanted more information about. We are either directly or indirectly impacted by that, so thank you so much for coming, appreciate it.
Madam President, I mentioned Mr. Paul, Mr. Chris Paul. I just want to say prayers out to him and his family for a positive result in recovery, so I do want to say that, thank you.
Great, thank you. We will move forward to our next item on the agenda. Resolution appointing one alternate member to the Hamilton County Rural Zoning Commission. I'd like to, well, let's see if there's any discussion, we have one alternate member, any discussion? I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mark Shalafman?
Shalafman.
That's really, spelled different, Mark Shalafman, sorry, Mark, if you're listening.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you and congratulations, Mark. We'll move forward to our next item on the agenda, JFS Office of Youth Director, Michael Patton of Job and Family Services, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on our newly-created Office of Youth. So, I want to walk through a slide that kind of gives you some background on where we are currently with the programming and also the Office of Youth structure. So, we'll go ahead and get started. Hamilton County is committed to providing employment opportunities to our youth. That's why we partnered with Talbert House and Harbor, two organizations with proven track records, serving youth to create a new Hamilton County Youth Employment Program. This new program is year-round and will be managed through our newly-created Office of Youth, which I'll discuss a little bit later in the presentation. This slide reflects the coverage area for both contracted providers. So, Harbor will predominantly cover the east and west sides of Hamilton County. Talbert House will cover the central portions of Hamilton County, areas that are darker red or darker blue or areas where the providers serve multiple communities within one zip code. The purple areas or areas where the providers are both serving different communities within the same zip code. This new program is year-round and is expected to serve 750 youth during the first year. The program is funding, funded using a combination of state and local funding sources that allows us the flexibility to serve more youth from a wider array of circumstances and income levels. Sarah Gray will manage this program. Sarah was hired in February, has worked closely with our contracting team to finalize contracts and define program outcomes. The program will also provide employment opportunities to our transition-age youth, these are youth that are aging out of our foster care system, to assist them in their move from, from our system to adulthood and independence. Our comprehensive case management and employment program also serves youth in Hamilton County. The program serves 1,850 youth per year and is funded with TANF, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, which comes through JFS through a state allocation. The CCMEP program is a case management program that provides employment and other supportive services to TANF-eligible youth ages 14 to 24. This year-round program is managed by Benita Wood. Community partners operating this program are Talbert House, Community Action Agency, the Urban League, and Easter Seals. Our third offering, our third youth offering is managed by Terry Jones Morris and serves 650 youth annually. The program also falls under the CCMEP umbrella and is funded using a mix of TANF and WEOWA funds to maximize the program's flexibility and reach. Our partners operating this program are Literacy Center West or Santa Maria, who serve children out of school age 16 to 14, EQUIS, Workforce Solutions, who serve youth who are out of school age 16 to 14, and finally, Cincinnati Youth Collaborative, who serve in-school youth ages 14 to 21. This slide reflects the new organizational structure that will be the Office of Youth. The office will be housed under our Workforce Development Section and led by Tim Dingler. The three staff will work together to develop, consolidate, and report on youth employment and training programs, and will work closely with other county departments such as HR to support the coordination of youth employment efforts across the county. Through each of these programs, the office will serve approximately 3,000 youth annually. As you can see, our partners offer a wide variety of jobs from technology to healthcare. Additional funding streams allow us to expand program participation criteria beyond income. We also look at barriers such as difficulty finding, keeping employment to enroll youth participants in the program. This slide talks a little bit about our referral eligibility process I mentioned earlier, that we will have internal referrals from our Children's Services caseloads for children that are transitioning into adulthood. Participants in the programs will also, in the Youth Employment Program, will also complete an application, a PRC application, that is requirement because of the TANF funding, and also applicants will complete another application, which is a youth employment application, to identify any barriers. The reason for that is so that we can identify which pool of money to support the youth with, but those that are over the income, 200%, of poverty income, if they have a variety of barriers such as gaining, finding, keeping employment, they will also qualify to work in the program. So, it goes beyond just TANF-eligible youth. We, we are hoping to capture a wider variety of youth with this program in this Office of Youth through our flexibility with levy funding. As a first step in the process, providers will offer skills and barrier assessments for each participant. These assessments will continue throughout the program, so any barriers that come up can be addressed along the way. I just want to clarify that discussions I'm having now are for the, exist the current new program with Harbor and Talbert House. So, when I refer to the, the last few slides, these are slides related to the existing, the current contract we have with Harbor and Talbert House, although all of the providers do very similar work as well. This slide talks about barrier removal. Here's some of the types of barrier removal supports available. The goal here is to offer solutions that minimize the impact of barriers that might have, that might be in a way of fully participating in the program. Barrier removal supports include transportation, clothing, this is not an exhaustive list, personal care items, mental and behavioral health as well. The providers will also provide job readiness training, such as resume development, identifying necessary credentials, career exploration, career education, such as what, what fields have, are high demand, what the wages are associated with those particular fields, skills and credentials necessary to pursue those particular opportunities. Providers will also offer soft skills and micro-based micro-credentialing opportunities for youth. After a review of the assessment and interest, participants will have the opportunity to attain these skills, such as Microsoft Office, Basic Outlook, Safety Training Pandemic Standards, Tools Recognition, Measuring Credentials, et cetera. But in addition to the soft skills and micro-credentialing, they will also have Industry Recognize, an opportunity to achieve Industry Recognized Micro-Credentials, such as Drone Operation, Digital Literacy, Data Analytics, Digital Market Marketing, Customer Service, This slide talks about exit from the program. All participants who exit the program will receive a customized plan that will include things like anticipated degree or industry-recognized certifications, timeframes, projected wages and retention data, current resume and cover letter, prerequisite skills and training, et cetera. In addition to participation in the program, participants will receive a bonus when they continue their employment through mid-July through August, up to $300 as a retention incentive. Credentialing and fall activity incentives will be reviewed in May of 2022, and a uniform amount will be determined at that time. Talbert House and Harbor will align any additional incentives in the future to provide a uniform approach to the program. And then, finally, is our flyer, this is active today. This is our Hamilton County Office of Youth flyer. Those interested can call 946-0400. The link is also there, and we will have this on all of our websites associated with the Office of Youth and our programming through JFS. And I'd be happy to answer any questions related to, to this today.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Director Patton? I really can't curb my enthusiasm, because I did not know fully that JFS had the work program, the job program that was, has been going on for a while, and now we are going to, when you say not covered by TANF, for those that are listening, if you are not under the auspices of JFS, we're saying that you still need to have a job if you're a young person. And oftentimes, they are X-ed out because they're not involved with JFS, so I'm really excited about that. I did see 14 to 18 in here, I thought our age went up to 21, was I wrong about that?
Right, I think the distinction had to do with 14 to 18-year-olds will complete the PRC application for TANF eligibility. All participants will, will, will complete the youth employment application for all of the services, and that's just to make sure we are, we are providing the correct service and also the correct funding stream, so.
Great, okay. And also, you said 3,000 youth? Oh, that's awesome. And also, you said that it would be a year-long program. I was thinking that, I was hoping that we could get it for the summer, but to hear that it's going to be a year-long program, I'm just really excited about it. And so, this whole, it's very strategically laid out, and who's responsible for what area, how many you're going to serve, what the budget is. And also, I like the idea of incentives, because we were, when I talked with you and you've talked to all the commissioners, I was hoping we could raise the pay just a little, but there's some restrictions as it relates to TANF. But in order to increase how much they're getting, the incentives work out well. So, just really excited, and it's online, it's going, starting today, and I'm just really excited about the jobs that are available and the training that will happen, and this is actually our first Hamilton County job employment program for Hamilton County, even though JFS has been doing one. So, thank you so much for your hard work and the staff that will be working to make this happen.
Thank you.
Vice President Reese?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the meetings to get to this point. Wanted to just highlight, and, and I want to thank the administrator and administration. And when we were going through the budget process, and this is my first time going through the process at the county level, I have always been for youth employment, whether it was when I was at the city as the vice mayor, was a major advocate to get, we had a CCY program then, and we never employed less than 2,000 people when I was there, that was my number-one issue. Went to the state, and at that time, that's why I'm glad to see 14-year-olds included at the state, and probably one of the reasons I was interested in even running to be a county commissioner, because before this board, which our board has been very innovative, but before this board, we, I had to fight to get money at the state, they had cut out 14-year-olds. And I remember calling the governor and I said, "Governor, 14-year-olds have to be in it." And he said, "Why?" I said, "Because we must get our job program to the youth before the street program gets to the youth. The youth will get a program. It's either going to be our program or the street program." And the more we can get our program there, and they look at, and they know what it means to go to work and be around adult mentors and see a different lifestyle, then those are the more people we get to save from being on the 6 o'clock and 11 o'clock news with a mugshot. So, anyway, he agreed, and I was president of Black Caucus then, and we submitted the money, and then they said, "Well, Hamilton County said they can't get it out with these other partners," because we were turning it all over to the partners. They go, "Oh, we don't want the money." I said, "Man, you don't know how hard it is at the state to get some money," and, and being in a super minority then. But then, I said, "Wow, what, what's important about our county commission positions is that the county is where the rubber meets the road. You could get the money coming from Washington, you could get the money coming from the state, but it's just like Amazon. If, if the package doesn't come to your house, you never delivered." So, we are the delivery system to when we get the money, how do we get it and get it to the people that need it the most? So, I want to thank the administrator, because in my budget, all of us had to turn in our budgets, and one of the things that I had highlighted was that Hamilton County should have a Office of Youth, and that the Office of Youth, reading it, this office should offer employment opportunities, how to code, how to do technology classes, as well as paid internships and fellowships, which we'll be hearing about soon. This will help our youth to make positive choices in the summer months, and we're going beyond, and help reduce violence. It will also be a way for our county to attract top talent by offering these opportunities for those that are in college, as well as those who are coming out of high school. So, they'll get a chance to see what it is to work with the county, and maybe they'll be the next, I'm hopeful they'll be the next directors, and they'll be the next county commissioners, because they'll know what the county actually does. I think it's important, when we had our March Madness Day, and we were honoring the kids, and they were honor roll students, and they had won state championships, but someone said to me, this is my first time coming into the county, I didn't know about the county unless I'm getting in trouble, I'm on my way to jail, or I got to pay my taxes. They didn't know about, we're way more than that. We're about trying to help flourish folks in the county. And so, this is a whole generation that will learn about what our county does. This is new, as President Dumas said, it's never been done before in the history of Hamilton County, having an Office of Youth. And I would hope that at the end of this part that you put in, this is just the beginning, I want to thank you, you, you've had to put restricted funds, which are TANF dollars, and they have restricted, restrictions. Levy dollars that gives you a little more flexibility. We're starting at, I think, 750 kids, I want to get up to 2,000, but we got to start somewhere. This also pays employers, if you an employer and you employ one of the youth, we pay for it. You don't have to pay for the, for the child, for the intern. It also will allow us to get, as commissioners, like we did at City Hall, we will be able to have some paid interns and youth in our office and see what, what they do. So, I want to thank Commissioner, I mean, I want to thank Director Patton, I want to thank Administrator Aludo, because you went back and put it together and brought this back, and I'm very excited, because now, this will be a one number, which I would, I would add to your presentation, to make sure this one number gets out. I would add that I would cut down the, the website, because it's kind of long, maybe it's a 513youth.com, and it still goes to that website, but just on the streets, they could understand it. I would add a texting component, these are things I talked to you about.
We are working on that, yes.
Yeah, a texting component, and at the end of, not the end, but Madam President, maybe in October, as we're going into our next budget, one of the things I think would be great out of this office is data. Be able to come back and say, here's all what we've done, here's how many youth are in Hamilton County, here's how many that we actually have helped, this is how many that we actually saved. And this Office of Youth, even though HR is going to make their presentation, it should all work together, internships, fellowships, summer and year-round employment certifications, all with a whole thing. So, when people ask us, "What have y'all done? These youth are out here and they ain't got nothing to do. What have y'all done? Y'all elected officials, ain't done nothing." We're able to say, "Hold on, more might need to be done, but here, we can have a, a annual report, here's our youth report, here's what we've invested, here's what we're doing, and yes, we might have to do more, but we are definitely trying to help save and flourish and encourage and mold as many youth as possible." So, that's why today, I think, is very important. I'm excited, we went from idea to now, we getting ready to have action, and this is going to be launched very soon. So, thank you, and looking forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Yeah, I too am excited about the program, and thank my colleagues for recognizing the importance of something like this and the idea for it, and thank you, Michael, for all the work that you and your team have put into making this a reality. I do think it's a really important priority of the board, and again, want to thank my colleagues for bringing it to the attention of JFS. So, a couple of things, just kind of high level. So, the partnerships with Talbert and Harbor, I think we're all familiar with Talbert House, could you help me become more familiar with Harbor?
I'm going to ask one of my ex-subject matter experts to come in, talk about that. Very similar, I believe they're up in northeast?
They're, they're an organization.
This is Tim, this is Tim Dingler. Tim is going to be our section chief, who will be over workforce development, also the Office of Youth. He's been doing this work a long time, and he and Sarah and the team have worked on the contracting and all of the specific details related to the program. So, I asked him to come, because I, I felt, I felt like I'd probably get a more specific question, so I have him answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, thank you. So, Harbor is, comes from Toledo and the Lucas County area, and they operate work-participation programs up there. They currently do the, their CCMEP program in Lucas County, and also their OWF Work-Participation Program. They, they operate down here in Hamilton County with They operate down here in Hamilton County with the central.
Community Health Board.
Community Health Board. And they've partnered with them over the years. So, they've been, they put in a bid to operate this program, and have so far been a great partner.
Okay, great. Yeah, have they done anything in Hamilton County before?
Just, they've worked with the community health.
Okay.
Board, working with individuals with mental, severe mental health issues.
Okay, okay, but nothing like this?
Nothing like this, but they've done it in other parts of the state.
Okay, great. So, it's a new part, and I'm just getting to the fact that it's a new partner, so I think that's exciting. Okay, and a couple of other things, and Director, we, I know we all had meetings with you to talk about the details of this program, but I just want to, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, I might need to answer to some of them.
Okay.
But just so that we can kind of round out what a youth can expect if they want to participate in the program. And as Commissioner Reese has said, and that's, I think, the beauty of this program, is that it's accessible to everybody, right? All youth can participate in this, because many of them have trouble accessing jobs. So, how much are the kids going to be paid?
Gotcha. Thirteen dollars an hour. The incentives that I discussed earlier in the slide, up to $300 an hour, we crunched some numbers on that through completion of the program. If they complete the program, on average, that would bump them up to $14 an hour, around $14 an hour.
Okay, thank you. And then, how many, and I'm just getting to the flexibility of the program, how many hours should they expect to work, or is that predefined, or can they be part of negotiating the number of hours?
Good question. I'll have Tim handle that.
So, that would depend on the youth, their availability to work, and what the employer needs. Typically, in the past, we've seen youth work about an average of 25 hours per week.
Okay.
So, that's normally what we see in our, historically, in our summer youth program, so I would expect to see that. Although, some of the older youth, your 19- to 21-year-olds, would probably want and need 40 hours a week.
Okay, great. And one last one, again, kind of a nuts and bolts. So, we've talked about this in terms of a year-round program and/or a summer program, so the youth have the opportunity to do this as a summer program, and then, as they go back to school, then that's the end of their commitment, but others can participate year-round?
Correct. So, it's up to the need of the youth, and the contractors and the providers understand that they, we need flexibility around that. So, some may use it for summer employment, go back to school. Again, the younger, school-age kids, the older ones can take advantage of all of the services, wraparound services that they provide, barrier removal, credentialing, that kind of thing, outside of the summer, fall, winter, you know, whenever they want to participate.
Okay, great. And just one last thing, so you've mentioned the partners, and it's been mentioned before. So, can you give us an example of who the partnerships are with by way of the employer, on the employer's side?
Good question.
Uh-oh.
We have even more experts.
This is Sarah Gray.
Not intended to be trick questions.
I mentioned her, she's leading the program, the newly-created youth program, and has been working really intimately with the providers on that front.
Great.
So, these contracts are hot off the presses, if not, really, really close.
Well, you brought your backup, didn't you?
Thanks.
Hi.
We have employers all around Hamilton County. We have, Mineki is one of those partners. We have, McDonald's has partnered, they've partnered in the past with summer youth employment. We have Cincinnati State, who's partnered for some of our credentialing and other internships and things like that. And we are looking to also create some partnerships here in Hamilton County, so they can get government experience. And I know that they have literally all over the place, whether it's within their own organizations. I know Talbert House does a lot of stuff within their own organization as far as working with the youth in internships and things, and they're contracting out to different places also. I can't really think of all the places off the top of my head, but I know that Mineki is one, Cincinnati State is one, and McDonald's, of course, and they have opportunities for all types of employers to come and partner. We have a lot of people reaching out to us right now within Hamilton County, within the private nonprofit sector also, looking for partnerships. So, we're looking forward to having a wide array of opportunities.
So, if I'm an employer, do I call the same number to get hooked into the program and say, "I'd like to have an intern"?
We have a place on our website where they can go and put in their information, and then we'll contact them and partner with them through our website.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm thinking about those youth that may have some criminal justice in their background, and how will that be handled? So, I can, I know people are listening, saying, "Oh, I have a record," or whatever. How would we deal with that?
So, that would be an example, an excellent example of one of the barriers that the providers would work with the youth to try to help them overcome. So, that would not be a barrier in most instances to finding employment. So, they would work with them to clear up any issues they may have.
Okay, so it wouldn't be a prerequisite or anything?
That's correct.
It would not prohibit, so that's good.
I would just add, too, on the employer front, the question Sarah was answering, newly-contracted, Talbert House obviously has been a provider before, we worked with them before on that front. Harbor relatively new in terms of this area. Part of that responsibility, obviously, for the provider is to make sure that those connections are in place and that the program is successful. That's why the data is so important. So, we, you know, our role and our expectation from the JFS standpoint is focused on the contract, language in the contract, the reach that they are able to maintain over the course of the program. We'll be monitoring that closely and in constant contact. I know Sarah's been in contact with providers almost every day on this front, so we'll continue to monitor that closely to make sure that they fulfill, you know, what is in the contract related to the service.
So, I'm not trying to have Sarah remember, but Mineki and McDonald's is great.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking like P&amp;G, or IBM, are we reaching out to those types of companies also?
I think we have a list from the providers as well. Okay. So, I know I've seen a list, it's much more comprehensive than that.
Sure.
I will certainly send that out to you guys, so you have a feel for what they are anticipating and the employers that they're engaging with as a part, as they ramp up this contract. So, I'm certainly able to share that data with you, so you can get a better idea of exactly what the universe of employers are going to look like.
We want to know now.
I know, I'm sorry.
Just kidding.
If you have them, I can give them to you.
No, no.
I can certainly read it to you.
Yeah, go ahead, tell us some more.
I knew she had it. She doesn't have it. Sarah, you don't have to. Yeah.
Well, this is just a summary of them, there are a large list of them. United Dairy Farmers Marriott, Tom &amp; Sheer, Rimke Grocery Store, La Rosa's Montgomery Inn, Cincinnati Parks and Recreation, Grand Sands Volleyball, Cincinnati Animal Care Humane Society, Davis Cookie Collection, Permagenic, Echocardian.
Great.
So, those are a few, there are some more as well.
Awesome. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I got a, yeah, I got something else.
You had something else?
Yeah, one other thing I don't think we've talked about, that I think is critical, well, I'll take two things. One is, by being an office of youth, it is good to have, that's where we have more than one person, but also, this is one phase, and the other phase is going to be what we're going to hear next.
Correct.
From the HR on the fellowship program. So, that falls all under the office of youth concept. But also, marketing, one of the things that, you know, I would hear is, you know, the contractors that do their own advertising, so they're on, and so people don't think that, and this happens a lot, not just with youth, but when we fund the funder, they then say, "Well, did the board ever do anything?" So, we're working on that, I know Bridget is working on that. I want to have one marketing plan. I want everyone to know that this board is putting together this new office of youth employment, youth, office of youth, and so all of the advertisements should have some, the tag or the beginning, something that's consistent, so they know that while they are the, we've contracted with them, this is the office of youth.
Correct.
Of Hamilton County. So, I know I mentioned that to you, but I wanted that out there, so we don't have like 15 different messages, and, you know, different phone numbers, and websites. And then, lastly, I just think, and I think getting something back to us about, here's the marketing is starting, we're doing this, this is what it is, but also, having it on our site, too.
Okay.
So, those questions are frequently asked questions, FAQ is on your site, but also on our site, if they go to Hamilton County, the office of youth is on there, here's who we are, here's what we do, here's our frequently asked questions, here's who to talk to, I think would be very, very helpful, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I remember saying that when you were in the office, you'd never see our seal on here, so I thank you for putting it on there.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
And even go beyond that, as you were saying. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is internship and fellowship programs. Frank Spataro, our Director of Human Resources.
And Madam President, if I could just very quickly, to Commissioner Reese's point, the presentation that you just saw and this presentation are very closely linked, even though we don't have office of youth over this, but this is all in response to the board's budgetary direction as it relates to creating opportunities for youth in the county, whether that's through the office of youth or in Hamilton County operations as well. So, while we didn't hit on it in the last presentation, I don't even think Frank was planning on hitting on it so much today, I just want to let the board know, we will be doing things such as making sure that when people call the number here, that, for the office of youth, that, to the degree that we ensure that if they're interested in internship, fellowship opportunities, that they can be directed there. So, we'll tie all this together. So, I just wanted the board to be aware that while you're hearing separate presentations, we're going to be integrating a lot of this.
And that's interesting that you say that, Jeff, because as I look at internship and fellowship programs, I think about older people. I know you were saying we're connecting it with youth, but there are some older people that would like to know what we do, would like to be a part of contributing in some way to Hamilton County. So, I don't want us to forget about those seasoned people that might want to be an intern. Okay?
All right.
All righty.
Good afternoon. And actually, I have the supervisor of workforce development here, Ed Camerit, who's going to help along with our presentation. Although, the agenda had this label as intern and fellowships, we're going to provide a presentation that's a little broader to cover the workforce development programs that we have in human resources. And as, you know, goals and objectives for that, we're going to realize or recognize we're in a dynamic environment, so we're always trying to improve the workforce to handle future demands, better service delivery. And part of our goal is also recognition as an employer choice for people that may want to come work here. So, actually, we have five programs that we're going to describe this afternoon, of which one is fellowships and interns. We have a mentoring program, succession planning, tuition reimbursement or assistance, and our existing HR development competency curriculum. And all of these work together to give, provide opportunities for employees to increase their skills, and also provide access points into the county for new employees as well. I'll start with interns and fellowships. These are going to be, these are two separate programs. The intern program, target population for that, are students actively enrolled in good academic standing at accredited college or university. They, and then for the fellowship, which is a higher-level program, we're looking for students who have completed at least a minimum of 60 hours of college-level coursework, or have, or have received their bachelor or master's degree in the past six months and are seeking a career in public service. So, we're looking, our interns are, they could be anywhere from freshmen to graduate students, but the fellowship program is specifically targeted to at least juniors, seniors, graduate students, and then students who are people who have received their masters, you know, within the past six months. Maybe, you know, they've been knocking around, and they're looking for some direction, and they're interested in doing a fellowship with Hamilton County. With regard to interns, they typically, they have a variable length of service, and we don't require any specific major or a background. They work, for the most part, on, you know, not for the most part, but they work on real projects. I mean, we discourage having an intern just doing busy work or filing, doesn't really serve the intern's purpose, or ours, really, for having them here. And we try to get them engaged, and part of the team, from day one, to expose them to what it would be like to work in a professional environment, and doing a variety of tasks to see what interests them, and hopefully generates some interest in public employment. Interns are paid anywhere from a range between $16 and $22 an hour, based on their level of school and/or the type of work that they're going to be performing for us. I think right now, we have four active interns employed, and we have three internships posted, although I think, maybe of the three that are posted, I think two might be in the process of being filled right now. Excuse me, the fellowship program is, as I said, it's a higher-level program, more professional. It's a 30-week program, and it consists of a core curriculum, and then an elective curriculum. The core curriculum are three, six-week, they'll spend six weeks in three areas. One is administration, the other is in budgeting and finance, and then the third area is human resources. And actually, I have laid out what I would consider the kind of core curriculum for human resources. I'm going to pass this out, or... I don't want to cover that in detail, it's pretty dense, but it gives you an idea, you can look at that at your leisure, it gives you an idea of what I have sketched out to comprise the six-week program in human resources. And I would work with each of the major program areas to develop a similar type of curriculum, so that all of the, the entire six weeks is taken up and well-spent time, where they'll be actually working on projects, as well as getting exposed to major areas within each of the core areas. And then, so every fellow completes the three core areas, and then there are four elective areas, from which the fellow would pick two, based on their personal interest. And that would be, those would be asset management, which would include facilities and stadium, planning and development, social services, which would be primarily focused on job and family services, and then criminal justice, which currently has reentry in the Addiction Response Coalition, but we're working with some of the other outside departments and elective offices to include them as well. That would be the court system, public defender's office, the sheriff. So, we're working to have them included in the criminal justice elective area. So, a fellow would spend 18 weeks in the core areas, and then another 12 weeks in the elective areas, for a total of 30 weeks, for which they would be, they would be paid a stipend of $880 bi-weekly, for a total of $13,200 over the course of the fellowship. Any questions on those two programs?
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation.
Well, I have more.
Oh, okay, good, okay.
The intern and fellowship are just two of, actually, five programs that we're going to cover.
Well, let me talk about the internship.
Well, the internship, those are the, the internships are the, that's the program for anyone who is anywhere from a freshman to a graduate student.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we not to ask questions right now?
No, no, go ahead, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation on the internship. And I think we're a little bit, for me, missing a mark, and I know you work hard on everything you do. But it says the target population, students actively enrolled in... the target population, students actively enrolled in good academic standing in accredited college or university. And I'm not agreeing with that. I'm seeing a, I talked about the season, I'm not thinking about them right now. I'm thinking about a young person who is willing, has a willingness, who has a desire, who has a passion, who has a heart, and a drive to be exposed to a positive environment, such as, you know, such as here, and how government works. And so we say in good academic standing, some of them may not be in good academic standing. Somebody, I mean, once you interview them, it might be a dropout. It might, but they have that desire for something better, for something new. And so I'm not saying you can't include this, but if this is our target population, we are going to miss the mark on the ones that I was thinking about being a part of the intern program. I'm not, obviously, good academic standing is awesome, but it may, you know, so maybe we need to add other variables, too, striving to do better, they've shown progress, or whatever, but I'm just going to deal with the intern part right now, I won't deal with the fellowship part. But that's sort of where I am. Even the fellowship part, to me, seems a little steep, if we're trying to get people that are motivated to take our places up here. So I'm just, and this is the first time I've seen this, I don't know if you sent it to us, but I probably would not have said it in this format, because I just don't do that. But I need to say, since it's public, that I think, I would say, we'd take another look at it. So, were you getting ready to say something?
Oh, you can add questions.
Okay, okay, I'm done.
Thank you. I think we're all kind of seeing this for the first time, in terms of your final draft. And I know that in the budget, I submitted, I wanted us to start a fellowship and an internship program. I see the youth employment, and interns, I see youth employment, interns, and fellowship as a, under one umbrella, but there's like different levels. So youth employment will allow us a lot more flexibility, someone who's not, is, maybe he doesn't have skills, doesn't even know what they want to, you know, do. I mean, I know when I was a teenager, I didn't want to do this, I think this was it, you know. So if he was an adult, I didn't think it was going to be this, I thought it was going to be Oprah and doing my communications, but God had another plan. But my point is, we want to expose them because a lot of times, they don't even know what county government does, they only see us at a negative, they only interact with us at a negative light. So, on the youth side, I think it gives us a lot of flexibility, get in, get to see what we do. And then we've got, of course, the internship piece. Maybe you're out of high school, trying to figure it out still, you know, maybe you're going for some type of possible post-high school education, but you're not like, and I don't think it has to be four years, it might be a trade, it might be, but you're trying to figure out. And you don't know that, working for the county, there's an HR director, they think it's just you have to run for office. You don't know there's directors in planning, and you could be in communications. I know when I came out, communications, I interned at Procter &amp; Gamble, but I didn't know, you know, I was, and then I was across the street at the Cincinnati Post, right across from this building, and didn't know it even existed, or anyone who has communication skills like myself would even think about that I could be over communications at the county, at jobs and family services. So I just think it opens up, what are the different areas that we're needing in the positions. But then, when we get to also the fellowship, so the ideal of the fellowship program was, and Commissioner Dreehouse is familiar with this one as well, because we were at the State House, and they have a state fellowship program. And it is highly competitive, you got to apply to get it, you've graduated from school, but you, most of the people come out of college, don't have experience. And that's the number one thing, we want experience, it's great you have a degree, we check, you got it, but really, we're looking for somebody that has some experience. So a lot of times, they don't get the position because they have no experience. And what they teaching in the books is not necessarily what's going on out here in the real world. So, this allows for experience. You get a year, I think it should be a year, like they do, they wear these little jackets, so they know that they are fellows, I guess, they get a jacket. But the thing I see that's missing in here, in addition to what we're saying, and I'm just seeing it for the first time, just going past it real quick, is number one, I think the pay is an issue for an intern. They usually get one year at the state, it's like a year of a job, but you don't have a guarantee you're going to have a job after it. Number two, we, this is an initiative of our board, county commissioners, and what I see in Franklin County, is every time their board makes, they do a very good job, I think, of marketing. But when their board puts something up, it's the Board's Office of Youth, it's the Board's program. So it's like their new, so this is our, quote-unquote, would be our fellowship program, but in here, we're not even included. There's nothing for them to interact with us. There should be a day or a week that our county board, and we get to kind of interact with them as well, as part of the curriculum. The other thing is, so the pay, interacting with us as part of the curriculum, and maybe there's a few others I would include in the curriculum, at least, maybe they're not there for a whole week, but they're interacting with our group. The other thing that I would say is, going off of, now, that's the fellowship, so we put that over there. On the internship program, I know Commissioner Dreehouse has had some interns, I think, for free, I think they volunteered. And, you know, there's a whole thing out here, we're all for, you know, paying people where they're labor. And I do believe that if we want them, I know at City Hall, I had them, State House, I had them, if we want them, we're left out of the internship. We should have an intern in each of our offices. I know we've got one in communications, and there may be some others, but that should be factored in here, if we choose. I've got at least 10 people that's called me to, if I want an intern, do we offer internships? So those are the two things, just off the, you know, seeing it quickly, I know that I'd like for us to, hopefully, to get something moving, because summer, it's summer already here, it's almost, are we in summer yet? It'll be time to go back to school, and we want to, we do our budgets yearly, and this was supposed to be a 2022 project, and we'd like to get something moving, but we do want to make sure that this is done correctly. So I think you've given us a good framework, but there are some things that I just quickly saw that we need to consider, among other things that our, my colleagues are putting forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank, for bringing this to our attention and bringing it in front of us. So I do, I have a couple of questions. So, yeah, I have had interns, they've all been free. They, some of them prefer the summertime, some of them prefer the school year, it just depends on the kid, you know, and where they're coming from. One came from Miami, and another came from UC, and I've had one from Xavier, so it does vary from, you know, student to student. But I do think there's a real opportunity for the interns to interact with some of the work that we do. And I, you know, when I had interns, I did, it can get a little monotonous, especially in the summer. And so we did make it a point to introduce them across the street to the courts, and maybe they spend a day in a courtroom, just becoming more familiar with that. And we introduced them to some law enforcement, so they had a little bit of exposure there. So we did try to make it interesting, that was on us, but I would love that, you know, that HR would kind of construct something similar to that, so that kids can plug into it. I had a question about the capacity, so there are seven, is from my math now, but I guess the expectation is to expand the internship program through this new program, is that correct?
We would probably add some additional interns, based on need to, I mean, we want to make sure that they have meaningful work to be performed, but there's, for instance, I could, I can come up with a list of things that I'd like to have somebody be doing in the HR department. So yes, there would be, hopefully, some opportunities for additional internships.
Yeah, Madam President, Commissioner Dreehouse, yeah, I think what Frank was rolling out, the four that are currently employed and the ones that are posted are interns that were already in the budget just this year. Many of them have already been, those internship positions have existed for some time. But to your point, yes, I think we would be looking at expanding this, and looking at the demand and the need in various departments, including in board offices as well. So it's not explicitly stated here, but I just wanted to refine that based upon the questions.
Okay, thank you. And so in this program and in the fellowship program, would it be some, somebody from HR supervising the interns or the fellows?
There would be someone from HR overseeing them, but for the most part, once they're in each of these areas of concentration, they'd be answering to what's labeled as like a principal sponsor within each of those departments.
Okay.
That would supervise them or give them work assignments on a day-to-day basis.
Okay. So, thank you for that. And so I'm really intrigued by this intern program, I think it's a great idea. The fellows, you know, at the State House, the beauty of the fellowship program was to bring folks in that had some level of interest in government, and give them some real-life experience. And again, it was up to us to make sure that that wasn't data entry, every day, right? They got to go to the session, you know, they got to interact, they got to maybe work on some legislation or some bills. I mean, it can be very interesting work, I mean, we're kind of nerds about this stuff, but it can be interesting to some people. But I think that is also the goal here, is to provide some exposure, and I do see it also as in a continuum, where it's youth employment, and then it's internship, and then the fellow is kind of a different category. But I like the idea of the exposure to the many different things that the county does, so kind of, it's almost like a curriculum related to that. And then some exposure to, you know, to the work we do, but the exposure to the other offices as well. So I'm really intrigued by that one, too. I had, often at the State House, the fellows became employees. I mean, often, Nate Simon, who worked here, was a fellow, Leszle, you remember, and he was spectacular at State House, and he was spectacular here, and he started as an LSC fellow. So that, you know, he was a person that was really interested in this kind of work, and so entered the program, right? That was the whole point of it. So, anyway, I look forward to, you know, flushing this out a little bit more, but I think it's really exciting that we're looking at this.
It is exciting. I also had a foreign intern that was here in '19, from Germany, her major was government. And so she just loved being here, and, not because she didn't love Germany, but just all the way that we, this government functions. And I also wanted to compliment you on your curriculum for, if, once you used your intern, how you have it laid out. Could you lay it out for me, or?
Sure.
Okay. But I think this is well thought out, and just really keeps them busy. We don't want people just sitting here, doing nothing. And I thought this was, from looking at it, your curriculum of six weeks was excellent, yeah. Thank you.
I also say, we would probably be the first county to have this fellows program, and really, that's what, when I put that in the budget request to the administrator, that's my thought was, wow, I like what they did at the state. And a lot of those people went on and got jobs, not just in our offices, but some of them at the Supreme Court, some of them went on and, you know, got other positions in departments, depends on who the governor was. But they were able to come out of there with, and then they also had a resume now, with experience. So the thought is, if we get them in here, and we have this curriculum, and they start to see areas that they may be interested in, now your HR, you already, they got access to all the jobs that will be available, and then maybe that following year, they're the person that goes into that job, but now they go in with experience. So this would be groundbreaking in a county perspective, because I couldn't really find any county in Ohio, at least, that has a fellows program like this. And so I think it would be just another, another first for us, but also a win for, you know, for our HR, for our employment department. So, yeah, like I said, I like the curriculum, I'd just like to have included, and that's what they would do with the fellows, they would get to meet, it was 100 of us then, 99 of us, but they got to meet us, they got to go to the Supreme Court, meet them, they were kind of like introductory days, and I just think if we should be added on there as well. But absolutely, I think this could be something that would be huge for us.
Very good. Thank you for your suggestions.
Madam President, if I could briefly, in the interest of time, and I'll defer to the Board, but the rest of Frank's presentation, I think Ed was going to give a good deal of that, and it relates really more to things that are ongoing in the HR department, related to current employees. It is a little bit of a separate topic. I defer entirely to the Board. We can hit that now, or we can bring that back at our next staff meeting, just because it is a little bit different. I'll defer to you in terms of how you want to hit it, just in the interest of time, I just wanted to give you that option.
I would be okay with having Frank come back with that component of it, are you okay?
It's fine.
You're all right with that, Commissioner Dreehouse?
Very good.
Thank you so much.
I'll go back to the drawing board.
Okay. Thank you, Frank, so much. Okay, we'll move on to our last item on the agenda, American Rescue Plan. Holly Christman, Assistant County Administrator.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, I'm back. A few weeks ago, I presented draft recommendations on the use of American Rescue Plan funds in six priority areas, and those were public health infrastructure, mental health, affordable housing, homelessness prevention, workforce development, and youth employment. Those recommendations were based on stakeholder engagement, they were based on available budgets, US Treasury's final rule, and the principles originally established for our ARPA funds. So, and also, as a refresher, and for those watching, these priority areas that we're talking about today are in addition to many ARPA programs that have already been implemented. Those include things like small business grants, nonprofit grants, mortgage assistance, to name a few. And they are in addition to programs that are under development, such as hospitality assistance through the CVB, satellite office, broadband, and sewer projects. So based on feedback during and after the presentation a few weeks ago, the recommendations in these six areas have been revised for your consideration. It was clear from the feedback that additional funding should be reallocated to affordable housing, childcare, and teen suicide prevention and youth trauma. And the revised recommendations reflect these priorities. So the revisions include reallocating $5.5 million to add to affordable housing, and that would come from workforce and youth development, reallocating to add $1.5 million to support organizations that provide direct services focused on teen suicide prevention and youth trauma, and dedicate $1.8 million in the existing workforce development budget towards increasing the number of childcare teachers. So I'm not going to go as in-depth as I did a few weeks ago, but I am going to just quickly go through the recommendations, really focusing on the primary changes. So, we talked about last time, our public health recommendations and the amount of $6 million, we have no recommended changes to those, so those will remain the same. And I did want to remind, again, for those watching, the Board allocated $6 million for these recommendations, and we also have, separate from this, $5 million allocated for community outreach and underserved communities to really help with health disparities. So that includes, of course, the new 513 relief bus, the medical services associated with that, and outreach to help reduce health disparities. For mental health, this is where we do have some changes, based on feedback. We still are recommending the expansion of the mobile crisis team to 24/7. Again, the mobile crisis team responds to mental health emergencies, this will allow them to go to 24 hours, seven days a week. And then, based on your feedback, we are recommending $1.5 million, again, to support those organizations that have direct services focused on teen suicide and teen trauma. That $1.5 million will come from our, we're no longer recommending a million dollars be used for a mental health awareness campaign, so that would be removed from our original recommendations. And we are also recommending decreasing our youth resiliency grants by $500,000. So just as a reminder, though, we continue to recommend funding youth resiliency, because we want to help expand proven youth programs that help overcome the impacts of social isolation. So again, the mental health awareness, though, any, any programs that we're not recommending funding, what we will do is, as programs in the American Rescue Plan start closing out, as funds may become available... as funds may become available, we'll revisit some of these recommendations and bring those forward to the board for consideration. So again, just to recap with mental health, you can see here what the original recommendation was and what our revised recommendation is based on feedback. Homelessness prevention, $5 million. We have no changes here. Just quickly, we continue to recommend $3 million to expand the shelter diversion program. This, the current program provides up to six months of wraparound services and housing. Oftentimes, this is not enough time to get families in stable housing and make them housing secure. So this additional funding will allow for, to expand to more families, to serve more families, and provide additional wraparound services. And we're also recommending $2 million for any innovations in homelessness prevention that would be funded through grant applications. Affordable housing, we are recommending, again, adding $5.5 million to the affordable housing pot. Very similar to what was recommended at the last time we were here. $17.5 million is continued to be recommended for a grant program administered by a qualified third party to coordinate project funding opportunities with a focus on gap financing in order to leverage the available dollars and to fund as many units of affordable housing as possible. The stakeholders, I mentioned this in the last time, for this pot of money did recommend focusing efforts on redevelopment, having housing that's close to community anchors, such as childcare, schools, jobs, and focus on homeownership. The second box up here on the right, the top right, the $8 million, that's what I'm going to talk about now. In the original recommendation, we had $2.5 million was recommended to invest in new affordable housing focused on energy efficiency, water efficiency, to really make the units as, as least costly to the homeowner and tenant as possible. We're revamping this recommendation to increase it to $8 million and focus on housing for seniors, disabled, and reentry. That, again, was based on board feedback. We will still, in both of these pots that I've mentioned, would like to focus on energy efficiency as well, just in terms of the operating costs for these. We continue to recommend no change to the $8 million to support renovation of existing single-family or multifamily affordable housing. And we continue to recommend $2 million to establish a homeowner repair program. So again, with this, with this recommendation, we are adding $5.5 million. And that $5.5 million will be taken from workforce development and youth development, which I will talk about right now. So as I mentioned the last time we spoke, the stakeholder group wanted to improve economic success for both the workforce and for companies through programs that connect people to careers with upward mobility and financial stability, and that helps employers find, develop, and retain talent. So these recommendations are pretty similar to what were brought forth a few weeks ago with some minor adjustments. We continue to recommend $1 million to improve the coordination of the workforce development programs in the county. This was hit pretty hard in the stakeholder engagement process, that Hamilton County, when it comes to workforce development, is resource-rich but coordination-poor. So this will help address that gap. The $7.5 million pot, that amount is still the same as our original recommendations. And this will support training and apprentice programs that are aligned with the target industries that our stakeholders identified. Those target industries are healthcare, which includes mental health, construction and trades, manufacturing, IT, transportation, childcare, and hospitality. So this, this pot of funding would allow workforce development training programs focused on these industries and focused on overcoming barriers to people participating in these training programs. So if a barrier is, they can't afford the training, maybe our grant dollars could help with that. If a barrier is, they're not paid to attend the training, maybe our dollars could go towards stipends. If the barrier is transportation, maybe our grant funds could help with that. So it's really focusing on those barriers to residents taking part in these training programs. And again, we've recommended $7.5 million for this. While childcare would be eligible under this, under this program, based on board feedback, we are recommending that $1.8 million of the $7.5 be devoted specifically to increasing the number of childcare teachers. So this funding would be devoted to purposes such as training, intentional outreach to try and recruit more teachers, credentialing, background checks, hiring costs, things like that. Lastly, we continue to recommend funding for marketing and awareness of the in-demand careers. We're recommending, though, reducing this. Originally, it was $2 million. We're taking it down to $1 million. And this would be, this outreach would be targeted to underemployed high school students and parents and guardians. I may have mentioned the last time, many of the in-demand careers do not require a four-year college degree. And there may be misperceptions on the opportunities available in these industries, including the salaries offered, working conditions, training, and overall upward mobility. So we're hoping that this type of campaign will help change the narrative around many of these in-demand jobs. So again, we originally budgeted $2 million. We're taking that down to $1 million. So also, in the last time I was up here, we had about $4.5 million for youth, youth development. And it was mainly targeted towards the Office of Youth. Well, I think you've heard all about that this morning. We have identified different sources of funding, thanks to, thanks to JFS. So we are leveraging our dollars and JFS will take on the Office of Youth and the youth development programs that were talked about a few weeks ago. And that will allow us to stretch our ARPA dollars. We're grateful for the partnership with JFS and for having them work through us, with us, on this reallocation. So in summary, we are recommending adding $5.5 million to affordable housing, taking that to $35.5 million. And that will be funded by JFS funding the youth employment programs. We no longer need that out of ARPA. Reducing the marketing for in-demand careers. And then no longer doing the pilot project for youth transportation. Again, we are also recommending $1.5 be used for teen suicide and teen trauma, teen suicide prevention and teen trauma. And to fund that, we will no longer have recommend mental health awareness and will be reducing the youth resiliency. And then again, finally, we are dedicating $1.8 million of the $7.5 in workforce development specific to increasing the pipeline of childcare teachers. So with that, the next steps, we know, obviously, we will respond to any board questions or comments. Once those are resolved, we would like to bring forward a resolution memorializing these changes to our ARPA plan. And then we would like to get the majority of the programs launched in 2022. I know the board offices, as well as administration, are receiving a lot of phone calls and emails about how to access these funds. So I do encourage those listening, those organizations that are curious about how the funds will be deployed, you can sign up on Hamilton County's website to receive those email notifications. And that just goes to hamiltoncountyohio.gov/signup. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Holly. I thank you and, of course, administrator and all the staff who listened to our additions, revisions, comments, and certainly incorporated that into this new plan. And for the residents that are listening, I want them to know that we not only listened to you, but we heard you and we put your money where your priorities are. And if you look at that plan, it's an awesome plan. And we tried not to leave any stone unturned, and I believe that we did. And it was a great allocation of the monies that we had and the priorities and the vision as a board and as a residence brought to us that we are able to move forward with. So thank you so much. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Holly, for the presentation. And I do want to thank the administration for pulling all these pieces together. And our office, like many offices, we've gotten a lot of calls. And then there's some people that didn't call, but we ran into them at the 513 relief bus as we've gone out to 28 different ZIP codes and 79 locations. We were at 74 of them. And as we heard things, we write them down and try to bring them back. Each of us was asked, obviously, to put in writing back to some of the things that we heard the first time. And many of them are in there. But I wanted to hit on the things that, that my office did present. Some of them are in, and some of them I have some additional questions. And we sent a memo saying, based on the feedback of our office from many constituents, here are recommended edits that we had. One, we had, of course, the Office of Youth and Employment, and now that has been answered. We thought that was very important at the time. We wanted to make sure that we would be able to capture youth that were not just youth of poverty. And so we had thought that these dollars would allow us those flexibilities. But now we have come back with a plan that was presented today, as you've indicated. So we had that in the, in our, was our number-one edit, but that has been handled. Number two, on the workforce, we said, unfortunately, there are currently more jobs than there are workers. So we've got a lot of jobs that need to be filled, and they are scrambling for workers. Usually, it's workers looking for the jobs. Now it's jobs looking for the workers. Based on that, I said I'd like to focus on financial incentives for the workforce. Stipends was my number-one thing. I know it's flexible in here, but I think it needs to be top-notch on the stipends or bonus or incentives, financial incentives, to make sure that we are actually being able to fill these jobs. I did talk about CDL as a pilot program. I do want to ask the question, if we do have CDL. I know that's one additional. I also had nursing and mental health job programs. I said I would like to possibly move some of the funding to increase the investment from there, that line item, to the affordable housing line item, which we did do today. And I wanted, mental health was my next component. I said the COVID-19 pandemic has had an effect on mental health of many citizens in our county. When I look at, when I look at our layout of funding, it shows that the funding is actually, it was going at that time to the opioid and alcohol abuse programs. But however, which we have a meeting tomorrow, our first meeting, we have a new One Ohio program, which will be able to fund many of these programs. Therefore, I recommend that we focus these dollars on providing pay incentives to mental health workers. We had heard from mental health workers, and we need some incentives to get those positions filled. And I thought that in this ARPA, we should specifically put some incentives on mental health workers as well as provide grants to grassroots organizations that focus on suicide prevention. Now, we've addressed the suicide prevention, but I just want to make sure that health, mental health and nursing, that those incentives would be available. And then I went on to affordable housing, of course. Since I do support the $40 million, but I also want us to look at ways to also help seniors and middle-class families who are struggling to have affordable housing. Therefore, I'd like to add $5 million in additional funding to the area of production of affordable housing to include, but not be limited to, disability housing and senior citizen housing. We should also look at producing an affordable housing project led by the county that includes broadband, solar, and energy efficiency as a pilot model. Then I went on to, of course, senior citizens, which is in here. I've talked about, we launched the senior citizen program, but that's just a pilot. We need to sustain this program that will help seniors with repairs and utility assistance. And you have put that in this budget. My last one is a little out of the box, and it may not come in this budget, but I think it's worth mentioning, and you'll hear a lot more about it. I'm really pushing sports tourism because I want to bring in more money to the county. Our county does a lot with amateur sports. We did get a call from the great, what is it, Great Hamilton County Parks about this ARPA dollars. Not necessarily this program, though. But I said we need a sports facility in Hamilton County to host major multi-sports tournaments as part of sports tourism. Our goal should be that we become the capital for amateur youth sports in the state of Ohio. And I know that Administrator Aludo indicated it may not be this pot, but we will be exploring another pot for that. So most of the things are in there. I just had a question on the stipings, the stipends, specifically into the nursing and the mental health workers. And I had a question about the production, housing production. Because on here, the housing production is still at $17.5 million. So I guess that $8 million, is that producing housing? Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure. Okay. So then, okay, so then that would be housing production as well?
Yes.
Okay. That was my main question. I was like, I want to make sure that part. And then if you can answer the part about the stipings and if CDL was also looked at in any way.
Absolutely. Thank you for those questions. Yes. For the stipends, under the workforce training programs, what we envision happening with implementing this program is accepting grant applications from training partners. And we want them to identify, what are the barriers they're seeing to residents accessing their training program? They know their, the barriers way more than we would. So if it is truly, hey, we need to pay stipends to get people into the training, then that would be potentially an eligible use of the funding. So it's, it will definitely be available if that training program feels that's a barrier to accessing their programs. With CDL, yes, transportation was identified as an in-demand industry, so that would be eligible. In addition, and I think Michael's still here, I hope I don't misspeak on this, JFS does have a CDL training program already in place. So that's also an option.
And these funds, is this, once we approve these funds, is that it? Or do we have any money left over?
This would be, all the money would be allocated. However, as programs start to close, they may not spend all the money. So we would come back with recommendations on how that money should be, would be recommended to be spent.
And this adds up to five years, is it, this money?
Yes. The ARPA dollars have to be obligated by 2024 and completed by the end of 2026.
Okay. So, because we were looking at long-term, you're thinking the housing would be more of our long-term investment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then there's other dollars that we voted on. Those ARPA dollars, we put, we talked about the 513 relief bus and some other. Is that possible when we, just so I get a whole thing in like one packet, this is everything we're doing with ARPA, and then that way we're able to articulate that? Because someone will say, oh, I thought you, are you knocking my program out now? So we could kind of say, hey, here's, here's everything, and you're still in there because you were already voted on, or that program?
That program.
Or that bucket, if we would say, was voted on in the last, the first component of the ARPA dollars?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly, for coming back and giving us the feedback. Yeah, the process worked similar to a budget process, and thank you for the opportunity. I think we all three can recognize things in the changes that are offered in the recommendations that the three of us made by way of our memos. So I just want to highlight a couple of things, and I'm grateful that these were taken under consideration. The one is the idea of helping some of the providers in our community do direct services because they are still struggling to do direct services, especially related to suicide and childhood trauma. So I can see that more money was allocated for that, and I'm grateful for that. And especially in those two specific areas, and I know some of my colleagues brought up the suicide piece in particular. Also, related to housing, I too am grateful that there's more money because that's really the granddaddy for us. That's what we said in the very beginning. And I think we've been true to that here with these allocations. And so I'm glad to see the increase for the affordable housing projects with the ability to do things like, as you mentioned, enter- to do things like, as you mentioned, energy-efficient houses, of course, but also maybe related to the special needs of either seniors or people with disabilities in this community. So I'm pretty excited about the opportunities, because that seems like a more flexible bucket than some of the other ones. So I think more to come on that one. And then finally, I want to note the childcare piece. You know, I think we heard pretty compelling testimony at our last meeting about how you can do workforce development programs, but if there isn't childcare available for those individuals, they can't get to work. And so it's kind of an underpinning discipline that supports all the other workforce work that we're doing and investing in. So I'm grateful that some of that has been carved out for the specific purpose of expanding the seats in this community for people to access childcare. So I think that was a really important adjustment that was made. No extra money necessarily, but just a more direct allocation to that. And then finally, I want to compliment the administration on the flexibility shown here. I mean, there was a lot related to youth programming, and you found a different source for funding to support those programs. And so I think it allowed us to do more in the housing space, because you were able to redirect some of those needs to a source of funding that was outside of ARPA. So I think, as the administration often does, related to a budget or anything else, you all are always thinking about, well, if not here, then where? And how can we address a need and still have as much as we want for some of these high-priority issues related to all the things that the three of us have mentioned? So thank you for doing it. It's a fine plan. I'm proud of this plan. It's kind of, I think it hits the mark, related to what we heard, what we know, and what needs still exist out in the community, and how we can, as a county, be as transformative as possible with these dollars. We've met the emergent needs. We did that work. We worked really hard getting those dollars out. And this one has been a little bit slower, a little more deliberate, more inclusive, let's just be, I mean, with all the round tables. So the process by design took longer, and I think it should have. But these investments will lead us into the next few years and hopefully have a real serious impact on some of the high-priority needs in the community. So I just want to thank you for doing all the, all the work, all the extra work related to this one.
Thank you so much. And I also want to thank you, as it relates to housing, returning citizens or reentry population, to incorporate them into the housing element is going to be a game changer for a lot of people that are in that situation. So thank you so much.
And if I could add, if you don't mind?
Sure.
To that point, Madam President, we did, we are hoping that with our workforce development dollars, to really help try and focus those on underemployed returning citizens, also older, older youth, to really help target those dollars to those populations.
Awesome.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I also just say, I think, just a little bit more bragging about our board and the work of our administration. But on the, on the real side, there's been a lot of talk about affordable housing. And of course, it's a huge issue, and we've got to try to tackle it. But I think that this plan that has been presented and that we're moving forward with, one, we put, I think, the most dollars that I've seen in affordable housing. We put our, we put the money where our mouth was. $40 million, now we're adding to that, $45 million, almost $50 million. We then diversified the dollars to affordable housing to hit various components, everything from homelessness to production, to diversity in production, to home repairs. We have put together a right-now program, because people need help right now. And then the innovativeness for housing with disabilities that came forward, who have a national model, we'll be able to hopefully implement something like that. Reentry, who has problems trying to find homes, senior citizens trying to hold on to their homes and make the repairs but can't afford it, to new housing for people who are right now looking to get a house and cannot afford a house because of the housing market. So I just want to, I don't want that to go unnoticed. Of course, we've got a lot of other components. But on the affordable housing, I think we have been groundbreaking. We have stepped forward. We've been forward-thinking, but also action-oriented. And so I do want to commend the administration and this board that said, we're going to step up, we're going to step out, and we're going to be a leader that others can continue to follow. We can't do it by ourselves. But $45 million, almost $50 million, when you put the homeless component, $50 million to try to change the trajectory of affordable housing in this county is remarkable. So looking forward to passing it and getting it moving and grooving, but I do want to say that today is a historic day in Hamilton County.
Thank you. Yes, yeah.
Briefly, just to add another kudos to the board here. But for anyone who might be at home watching this, who's saying, hey, this all sounds great, but I can't believe it's taken, you know, we've talked about taking a thoughtful, strategic approach to this, and that's all great, but it's taken this long to get money out? The answer to that is no. We have been getting, for all those emergent needs, where the board has said, we want to make sure we're getting money on the street immediately, because we have these urgent needs. So millions of dollars have already gone out from small business, nonprofits, all the emergency rental assistance and utility assistance dollars that have gone out, mortgage assistance. So I just want to, if someone's watching at home, thinking that this is all of our money, that is not, this is the money that the board wanted to set aside to be strategic about, long-term planning. But there is a lot of programming that is, that already went into place on day one when we got the, when we got the resources. So I just wanted to highlight that for people watching at home.
Thank you for that comment. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, with no further business to come before the board, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.